Has joined the conference.
Hey Todd, this is David. Did I hear you call in? I'm just checking to see if it works.
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay.
Jocelyn has joined the conference.
Brad DeReemer.
Has joined the conference.
Hey Brad, Jocelyn, this is David. We just wanted to check, make sure it works. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, Brad can hear you.
I can hear you also.
Okay, perfect. So we'll, yeah, we'll go on mute here for a little bit till we start in about five minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Yep, we are.
John.
Has joined the conference.
John, this is David, can you hear us?
I sure can. Good evening, everybody.
Okay, welcome. We'll, we'll go on mute here for about three or four minutes and then we'll get everybody back on, okay?
Thank you.
Cecilia Kobel has joined the conference.
From what we can tell, Selena is the only person I didn't hear.
Selena, this is David. Have you joined the call?
We have a shooting today, Scott? I heard at 141st and 37? What was that about? Okay, alright. That's good.
Selena. Has joined the conference.
Selena, this is David. Did I hear you join?
Lisa Bradford.
Has joined the conference.
Okay. And Lisa, this is David George. Just want to make sure you could hear us. Did you join?
Yes, I did. I can hear you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Rick Hall, have you joined yet?
Rick Hall, early? Or half, half hour late? Well, bill for half hour late, if he goes minute over or something.
Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Has joined the conference.
Pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for attending the March 23 Fisher City Council meeting. We just had the pledge of allegiance and, Chris, do we need to do the roll call first and then we go through? Okay. For the council members remotely, I'm going to call each one of your names and if you'll just say aye or here, then we'll take the roll call that way. Councilmember Bear, Jocelyn.
Here.
Councilmember DeReemer. Brad. Councilmember Weingart.
Here.
Brad was here, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, no problem. So Brad was affirmative. Vice President Stoller.
Here.
And President Kobel.
Here.
Okay, everyone remote and then here, can I just name them? Didn't have him here. Todd Zimmerman, are you here?
Here.
Okay, thank you Pete. And then Chris, can I just name the members here? Okay, and then Jennifer, just for the record, note that Sam DeLong, Pete Peterson and David George are here in person. Okay, the first item of business is the consent agenda. There's really nothing, Scott, for the, for the March disability, right? So we'll just go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Pete Peterson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Weingart.
There's a second by Sam DeLong. Anyone on the phone, are there any changes or additions or questions for the consent agenda?
Not for me.
Okay, seeing none by the council members on the phone. Anything else from the members here? If not, all those in favor will do a roll call vote. So do we need Jenny to do that or do you want me to call this?
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Yes.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to our first item, which is government miscellaneous, R 032320B, request to approve a resolution to extend local emergency declaration. And Chris, I think you're going to give a summary, or Scott, sorry.
Yeah, I'll just touch briefly. I know in our conference calls or updates on the COVID-19 event that we're all still dealing with, I've brought you up to speed on all the actions that I've taken to date. Under the governor's declaration of an emergency, it afforded me the opportunity to enforce and enact certain actions within our local government, most of which have been really two really policy decisions, executive orders, if you will. One was the executive order to put in place a travel advisory or a travel warning here in the city of Fishers. It was a declaration of a disaster that allowed me to regulate people's travel. What we in general said was any unessential travels needs to be eliminated. And we really based that on four basic things. If you needed to go somewhere for healthcare, if you needed to go somewhere for your employment, if you needed to go out and get food or you needed to take care of a loved one, those were four appropriate things to go do. Under Indiana law, and Chris can touch on this if need be, my declarations have a lifespan of seven days without the ratification of council to extend that. Tonight, I'm before you to ratify and extend not only that declaration, but also the second executive order that I put out, which was suspending for a period of time, I believe it was two weeks, the door-to-door solicitation. So now that these folks know that there's lots of people at home, we saw an uptick in the number of people knocking on doors, asking for business. Obviously, if we want to eliminate or limit the amount of human-to-human contact to stop the spread of this virus, we thought it was a prudent and appropriate approach to eliminate door-to-door solicitation. What we're asking for tonight, and what I'm asking for, is to extend these authorities through the duration of Governor Holcomb's declaration. So as of right now, that leads us to April 5th, is that correct, Chris? But he does have an option to extend that, I believe, to May 1st, is that correct? So my ask would be that you continue these declarations of my authorities through the duration of Governor Holcomb's declaration to coincide with that. That's what I'm here tonight to ask for.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if, in full transparency too, David, real quickly, every action that I've taken, whether or not it even falls under the jurisdiction of the city council or not, related to COVID, we've listed in this resolution so everyone understands every action that's been taken to date.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking about item number R 032320B. I'll ask first for the council members that are remote, if they have any questions. So I'll start with Jocelyn. Did you have any questions on what the mayor just talked about or presented?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Brad DeReemer.
None, thank you.
Okay. John Weingart.
No questions.
Okay. Todd Zimmerman.
None.
Selena Stoller.
No questions.
Okay, and Cecilia Kobel.
Uh, no questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the members here?
No.
Just one. So if he does extend it, we don't have to come back and approve it again? Okay.
As it's done, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item one of the agenda.
Okay, the motion to approve by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sam. So we'll go through the roll call. Jenny?
Cecilia Kobel.
Uh, aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Aye.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the council for their support behind my administration and my team through this difficult time. And today, again, we had another layered on top of this, another difficult situation where our police officers were in an active shooter scenario where multiple police officers were shot at. And fortunately, the situation has been resolved. Unfortunately, there are fatalities. Not, not the police department, obviously, and thank goodness, but the individual did perish in the incident. So more to come on all of that moving forward, but a difficult day for the police department. I'm just glad all of them are going to be home safe tonight.
No injuries at all from our police department?
No. That's, I won't say good news, but that was good news, if you know what I mean.
Yep.
Okay, due to number one that we just passed, there's a follow-up item, which is the next one, number two, R 032320. And Chris, I believe you were going to present that.
Yeah. Thank you, David. For the record, Chris Kreisel. So on March 6, when Governor Holcomb issued his executive order declaring COVID-19 a public health emergency, it availed political subdivisions to a lot of provisions of the emergency management disaster law. Specifically, in the event of a disaster to emergency, the act allows political subdivisions to waive procedures and formalities otherwise required by law pertaining to the performance of public work, the entering into contracts, the occurring of obligations, the employment of permanent and temporary workers, the use of volunteer workers, the rental of equipment, the purchase and distribution of supplies, materials and facilities, and the appropriation and expenditure of public funds. The intent of this provision is to allow cities to continue operating during times of emergency, not knowing how infrequent public bodies may get together during this time. In response to this public health crisis, as the mayor was mentioning, the city has taken several actions to date. We've delayed water payments for 60 days. We've provided a stipend to essential personnel to assist with childcare services and unforeseen expenses during this time. We've waived certain requirements of the city of Fishers Unified Development Ordinance with respect to outdoor display and storage standards and temporary signs, so we can assist restaurants with takeout deliveries. And then we've closed park playgrounds. The city took a reciprocal action with its Board of Public Works and Safety this morning. Between the board and the council, you all have jurisdiction over all those matters that can be waived under the act. So this resolution asks the council to waive the procedures and formalities outlined under the act and authorize the mayor with the authority to enter into, perform and execute on any and all matters necessary to handle during this time period, handle the local disaster. It's the city's intent to operate business as usual to the furthest extent possible, but we want to be best prepared during this time of local emergencies. So that's the request before you. Now at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We get the questions in a second. And actually, this is for the members at home. I'm going to have a motion and then a second. Make sure that we do have a motion and a second, and then we'll go through the roll call, four questions, and then we'll go for the vote. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. So now we'll go through questions for this particular item. Jocelyn, did you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Brad DeReemer.
None.
John Weingart.
No questions.
Okay. Todd Zimmerman.
None.
Selena Stoller.
No questions.
Cecilia Kobel.
None.
Any members here, any questions? Okay. So we'll move on to the vote. Jenny, could you call the roll for the vote, please?
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Aye.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear.
Aye.
Great, thank you Jenny. So move on to budget and financial. The third item, which is R 032320A, request to approve a resolution of the city of Fishers, Hamilton County, Indiana, reestablishing the cumulative capital development fund pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-9-15.5. And this item will include a public hearing in a moment. Chris, you were going to present this?
Yep, thank you. So the cumulative capital development fund was originally established by Fishers in 1984. Indiana Code Section 36-9-15.5 allows cities to utilize the CCD fund for any municipal purpose. Traditionally, the cities utilize the fund to finance expenditures related to capital improvements, for example, HVAC replacements, new roofs for city buildings and replacement of windows. This is not a new tax. The cities utilized this fund since 1984, 1985. Original legislation allowed the CCD fund to be renewed every three years. However, now legislation requires that this fund has to be reestablished each year. The state requires the CCD fund for the next budget year, so 2021, to be established by April 31 of the prior year. Due to this process, the CCD fund can't be established during the budgeting process. The maximum rate for the CCD fund can't exceed five cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And the city's maintained its five cent rate and now seeks to reestablish it. We respectfully ask the council to conduct its public hearing and approve the resolution reestablishing the fund.
Okay, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Any members wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. And seeing none, Chris, we did have a note outside. Did anyone send anything separately?
We did. We have a, we did have one member of the public submit a comment, Andrew Young, and Jennifer, I'll get this to you for the record, asking that we delay the approval of this item during this time.
Okay. And you just said we have to set this up, or basically redo it by April 1st, is that right?
So the completion of the process has to be finalized by April 31st, but after tonight's action, assuming the council approves this resolution, there's a 30-day remonstration period before the city can submit the reestablishment of this fund to the DLGF. So we additionally have to account for that 30-day remonstration period.
Okay. And again, just like the last one, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second for this item. If that's successful, then we'll move to comment and question period by council members. Is there a motion for this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Sam. Okay, we'll move to questions on this particular item. Jocelyn, did you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Brad DeReemer.
None.
John Weingart.
No questions.
Todd Zimmerman.
None.
Selena Stoller.
No questions.
Cecilia Kobel.
No questions.
Anyone here, any questions? Okay. So we'll move to the vote. Jenny, can you call the roll call, please?
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Aye.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear.
Aye.
Great, thank you Jenny. So move on to item number four, 032320A. Ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to refinance the city's obligation bonds of 2010. Excuse me. Series.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, did I miss?
Nope.
Oh. Series A, providing funds to be applied to pay for construction of certain road improvements and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of bonds. We'll have a public hearing in a moment, but this is a first reading. Chris, please present.
Yeah, sorry to cut you off.
Nope, you're fine.
The next three items pertain to refinancings for the council. So first, the matter before you. This ordinance approves the issuance of the city's taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A, for the purpose of refinancing the city's general obligation bonds of 2010. In 2010, the city issued a general obligation bond in the original principal amount of $11,830,000. Currently, we have $7,135,000 in outstanding payments. Indiana Code 5-1-5-1 provides that the common council may, by ordinance, provide for the issue of bonds to refund outstanding bonds issued at any time by the city and to pay redemption premiums and cost of refunding to affect the savings to the city. The issuance of the 2020A bond shall not exceed $7.7 million for the purpose of refinancing all of the outstanding 2010 bonds, which also includes the payment of redemption premiums and cost of such refunding. Second, this ordinance approves the issuance of the city's general obligation bond, Series 2020B, for the purpose of providing funds for road improvements, including a roundabout to be located at the intersection of 126th Street and Ford Drive. The amounts to be issued under this series will not exceed $2.2 million. So this ordinance authorizes all actions necessary to complete the bond issuance and following the public hearing, appropriate the proceeds of the bonds in an amount not to exceed $9.9 million plus interest when the bonds are payable from after the war and property taxes. So we respectfully ask that the council conducts its public hearing and hold first reading on this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. I'll open it up for a public hearing now. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Jenny, please note that no one came forward. And then Chris, did anyone send in a comment or?
Nope, no comment.
Okay. So then I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion for first reading on this item?
Motion for first reading.
First reading by Pete, and that's all we need tonight on this, right?
That's correct.
Okay. For the members at home, we just needed a first reading, so we'll move on to the next item, which is item number five, R 032320C, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Fishers, Indiana, approving Fishers Redevelopment Authority lease rental revenue refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the Fishers Redevelopment Authority lease rental revenue bonds of 2009, approving an amendment to lease and taking over actions related thereto. Council Action Form 1, Resolution 1, I'm sorry. Chris, please take it.
Thanks, David. So this resolution approves actions, as you mentioned previously, taken by the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission to refund outstanding lease rental revenue bonds of 2009. So specifically, the Redevelopment Authority and Redevelopment Commission entered into a lease on June 1, 2009, and it was further amended on July 13, 2011. The Redevelopment Authority issued this lease rental revenue bonds of 2009 in the original aggregate principal amount of $18 million. The 2009 bonds are currently outstanding in the aggregate principal amount of $7,240,000. Indiana Code 36-7-14.5 authorizes the refunding of bonds issued by the authority. So due to favorable market conditions, the authority desires to refund all or a portion of the outstanding 2009 bonds in order to affect the savings and the interest cost on the refunded bonds. The authority adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,600,000 for the purpose of providing funds to affect a refunding of all the refunded bonds and pay the cost incurred on the account of the issuance and sale of 2020 bonds. The annual rentals payable by the commission under this lease, as amended by the lease amendment, will be pledged by the Redevelopment Authority to pay debt service on the 2020 bonds. Any lease approved by a resolution of the Redevelopment Commission must be approved by an ordinance or resolution of the fiscal body pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-7-14-25.2. So with that, we respectfully ask that the council approve this resolution and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And for the members at home, what I'll do again is I'll ask for a motion and then a second, and then we'll move forward with questions or comments from the council members at home.
This is just not a first reading? It's not a public hearing?
No, this is just a resolution to approve. Action was previously taken by the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sam. Now move to any questions. Jocelyn Bear, did you have any questions on this item?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brad DeReemer.
Chris, on the last item, what interest rate were we paying in 210 on those bonds?
I think he asked interest rate, Chris.
Ooh, sorry, this is Lisa. I have to go back, I can look.
Just a second, Brad, we're looking that up for you.
That's okay, that's okay. Yeah, at your convenience, and then hopefully, if we wait maybe another 30, 60 days, we'll have a great rate for these bonds for the 220, so that's good, no problem.
I'll pass that to you guys, what current interest, what the interest rate on those, what that, on that bond was, and actually, all three of them.
Thank you.
And send that out, yeah.
Chris and Lisa, this is Rick Hall. In, in response to Brad's question, the, right now, it's hard to predict what the interest rates are, but we're just trying to put these refundings approvals in place so that when the bond market comes back, there's significant savings to the city. So before the, everything changed so quickly, the cumulative savings between the three deals that you had before you was over a million dollars. Right now, there's no bond market. But if we get the approvals in place between this meeting and in April, then we'll be in a position to sell bonds when the market comes back.
Thanks, Rick.
Does that answer that, Brad?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Rick, thank you, Lisa. I'll move on to John Weingart, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Todd Zimmerman.
No questions.
Thank you. Selena Stoller.
No questions.
Thanks. Cecilia Kobel. Thanks. Cecilia Kobel?
No questions.
Okay, any members here? Okay, so we'll move on to a vote. Jenny, can you call the roll call, please?
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Aye.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Brad DeRimer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong, aye. Jocelyn Bear.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. So we move on to our last item, which is number six, R-032320D. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Fishers, Indiana, approving the issuance of the City of Fishers, Indiana taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2020, to refinance the Town of Fishers, Indiana redevelopment district bonds, Series 2011. Chris, please.
Thank you David. Before you, as you mentioned, is a resolution to approve the issuance of the City of Fishers taxable redevelopment district refunding bond, Series 2020, for the purpose of refinancing the city's outstanding Town of Fishers redevelopment district bond, Series 2011. The bonds are an obligation of the City of Fishers, Indiana redevelopment district, payable from pledge of TIF revenues from the State Road 37 allocation area and special benefit taxes on taxable property within the district. Specifically, on March 20th, 2020, the City of Fishers Redevelopment Commission, as the governing body for the City of Fishers Redevelopment Department, adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of the City of Fishers taxable district refunding bonds in one or more series in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,200,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay for all or a portion of the cost of three different things. First, the refunding all of the outstanding Town of Fishers Series 2011 bonds, including the payments of any redemption premiums and cost of refunding and the payment of accrued interest on such refunding bonds. Second, the fund of debt service reserved to secure the payment of the bonds if necessary. And third, the cost of selling and issuing the bonds. As required by Indiana law, the common council is required to approve the issuance of the bonds. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. As before, I'll do a motion and a second and then we'll move forward to questions from the council. Is there a motion for this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sam DeLong. Okay, I'll move to the questions. Jocelyn Bear, did you have any questions on this item?
No, no questions.
Okay. Brad DeRimer?
None.
Thank you. John Weingart?
No questions.
Todd Zimmerman?
No questions.
Selena Stoller?
No questions.
And Cecilia Kobel?
No questions.
Okay, any questions or comments here? Okay. Jenny, can you take the roll call?
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong, aye. Brad DeRimer.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Aye.
Jocelyn Bear.
Aye.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll move on to our last item, which is number 13. That's a public comment period. Is there anyone, a member of the public that's here tonight wishing to address the council on any item?
David, we had one member of the comment of the public who submitted a comment, Dave Magner. And again, I've turned this information over to the clerk to place into the minutes. But Dave was inquiring about our planned infrastructure project at 116th and Cumberland Road. And our director of engineering, Jason Taylor, is going to be reaching out to him shortly.
Okay, thank you very much. And if there's no other comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Pete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sam. Do we need to take the, Jenny, please take the roll? We're official.
It doesn't, it doesn't need a roll call.
Okay, never mind. Thank you Jenny.
Okay.
Okay, and just real quick, Larry, I want to thank you for coming. You've been very helpful to get very important information out this week, and I know that you'll carry this forward. And I know that you've done this, but if you could continue to mention, it's on the website. Some people don't have access to the website, but the phone number, the 595-3211 for residents. And then also, I know that the mayor's done a great job last week of transitioning staff to be remote. And this week, he's working on a great job of working on citizens, mental health, other things. People aren't used to being at home, so the website also has some information. I know you've seen that, but if you could continue to get that word out, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.